... open the meeting, the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Take a moment of silence to reflect on who's here and remember all our first responders and military personnel. Thank you. In accordance with Mass In the Laws, we're taking the meetings. Everybody else taking a meeting? Public comments? None. Counsel comments?
Just one. I was gonna bring up, we got our schedules for our next meetings for the end of the year, and I noticed that September 11th was the meeting scheduled. I know the fire department has their annual ceremony up there, so, and I know we discussed this before the meeting, and I assume we're gonna move the time to 5:00 or 5:30 or something like that, so, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
And now, just other quickly, in terms of, it looks like we're all here on July 10th, do we need to announce anyone that's looking to run for council?
People are interested if you let us know, so I'll wait. Everybody else is?
So, interested in running for a position. We're up for elected.
Don't all speak at once.
We're talking about it now, is that what you're asking?
I was just wondering, yeah, it makes sense we're gonna be, we're gonna be voting on it on July 10th.
I'm interested in running for president.
Yeah, we're accepting.
Okay.
Um, I would, I would be willing to resume my responsibilities for another year.
Okay. Anybody else?
Not this time.
Let us know. We don't know. Okay. Let us know. Denise, you're up.
I was gonna say, I'm, I'm not running for anything.
You run away. You should run away.
I'm running away.
Some days your life, right? I've been running from a way problem for years.
So, I don't wanna say y'all are aging me, but I didn't used to need reading glasses when I, when I started here. And now I started putting them in my bag. So, you'll see two attachments to my, my report. One is the summer reading programs, which is awesome. The, the programs that they have are really great. And the other is something that I'll speak briefly about in my report. LCAD is trying to modernize their, their programming, so, this described it better than I could sort of capsulize it, so, we've got that. So, good evening. The departments involved in the 4th of July festivities had their final meeting this morning, and this year's events are, are all set, and the whole planning process was a whole lot smoother than it was last year, from a town manager who said last year, "Fourth of July? What's the big deal? Parade and carnival? You just need to experience it once and you don't forget." Detective Joseph Barone is retiring July 6th after 34 years of dedicated service to the town's police department. I'm sure most of you are already aware of that, but for the public, they, they may not be. We all wish him a long and healthy retirement. Summer's definitely here, just ask the recreation department. The pool and day camps have begun, with 81 participants to the day camp this first week, which is more than last year. Our new director is disappointed in those numbers, but I'm sure she's going to be doing a lot about that. And she's only been here, I don't remember how many months it is, it has not been a lot of months, and I'm gonna pass around something that she initiated this year that we've never had, that I was so impressed with, because if we had it last year, it would assure help the pain that we went through. It's a much, much smoother transition from spring to summer programs this year, thanks to our new director and her staff. As part of the town's goal to implement cost savings on purchased services and goods, the director finances, is encouraging all departments to use COMBIES. And it's a state procurement site for purchasing at negotiated discounts. Departments have already started, there was a training, mandatory training for everybody, so that even department heads would know what's in there in case they are looking to purchase something. I've, I've included a little statement from COMBIES, so you get a sense of what that, what it's about. The cost savings are huge in some things, not great in others. You can even buy vehicles that way, they negotiate discounts with all kinds of major suppliers, so that the, the price of a vehicle may be the same, but you get an extended warranty, or it comes with all the package stuff that you need in the car, the air conditioning is an extra, the steering wheel is an extra, all of that. So, it looks like it will help us consolidate purchasing, which is something that both Sarah and I have had as a goal for a year now, and also at, at lower rates beyond just consolidating. It's not just buying in bulk, it's also the cost of a box of paper, like $3 difference per box, and we go through, I can't imagine how many, how many hundreds and hundreds of them.
I see, so?
Mm-hmm.
To interrupt, I, I did, went to that training and ordered two toners, which normally costs 450 bucks. I got two for 300. And toners, you're always using them, so, that's a huge percentage saving, so.
There you go.
That's good. And that's just one item.
Good example.
Yeah.
Leila Johnson reported, "Close to 300 children and adults attended the library's summer reading program kickoff." By far the largest turnout they've had for that event, and I've attached a list of the summer programs, as I said. LCAD is looking for ways of updating the cable access bulletin board. Please share any ideas you have with Don Mackey, and he spoke, spoke about it much more concisely than I could, so I just added that. I've asked the town clerk, Tom Florence, to look for seminar opportunities for staff, boards, and commissions for state ethics rules, open meeting laws, and Robert's Rules of Orders, as there are boards and commissions that struggle to comply with these laws and guidelines. And I'm struggling to get them to understand that they're struggling, so, I'm, I'm hoping that they will come to some kind of training. I don't know that all those that really need to will, but we have meetings that aren't filed, we have agendas that are never posted, we have, you know, we, we need to comply with the law, and we're really not. Since East Long Meadows ambulance service begins operating on July 1st, I've asked the fire chief to provide a brief update and answer any questions you have regarding this great new service the fire department's providing, so, the floor is yours.
We were fortunate enough, last week, we got our, the town received its license to operate. Our ambulance passed its inspection, so we have, our ambulance itself is certified. Today, we met with our medical director and several of our police dispatch supervisors. Sergeant Manning is the primary 911 coordinator for the department under Jeff. We met with him to set up some of the operating procedures. Some of that is kinda in limbo for some of our future later discussions tonight with our EMD program and stuff, but we are geared up, ready to start 6 o'clock Sunday morning with AMR onboard. It's gonna be baby steps at first, but everybody in the fire department, and actually the people we've been engaging with, with AMR, are excited and looking forward to it. If you haven't had a chance to see the ambulance, it's there, the ladder truck is there, you can stop by anytime, a few council members already have. They're doing some training on the ladder tomorrow, and that, anticipate July 1st to be in service also. They'll both be in the parade, actually both in service, hopefully nothing major happens while we're there, we don't need to go running out. But it's an exciting time for the fire department, and your support's been great over the past couple of years, and I'm looking forward to, you know, making it work for everybody. Any questions I can?
With the ambulance service, is our fire department gonna be the first responder?
Depends on the type of call. Initially, we're, we're basic life support, because the state won't, even though we have paramedics on our staff, they won't allow you to go from nothing to advanced life support. So, AMR is the primary for advanced life support, we are the primary for advanced life support. If AMR is tied up at a previous, if you listen to anything recently, it's been one, two, and three calls, stack to stack lately. So, if they get that first ALS call, we're gonna get the second. They're either, they're either gonna send an intercept in, which is an ALS, Advanced Life Support Paramedic, to work with us, or we're gonna reach out to Long Meadow, which we have an agreement with, to, on the way to the hospital, we're gonna grab one of Long Meadow's medics. And so, timing-wise, it should definitely improve for all of us, for the town, for our residents, and operation-wise, as we continue to staff up and grow and go to that 24 hours and transition to that ALS, it should be a, a great service. Baby steps initially, and that's our goal, you don't wanna bite too much off at first. It's been a busy couple of months, so.
No other questions?
Perfect.
Excellent. Thank you.
That was easy.
That was easy. Also, in case some are wondering who this person that's not normally in the audience, this is-
You always took care of yourself already.
Oh, you did already? Okay, so you're already, well, for those that don't know in the audience, this is attorney Kevin Maynard, he is representing us for, for now, and I think moving forward, so, he's here for the executive session that we're gonna have later.
Good, welcome.
So, all I have left is save the dates, and you've already saved July 4th, I'm sure, and August 7th is National Night Out. That's my report.
All right. Thank you. Move the second for discussion. Here in all favor?
Aye.
Communication correspondents in the house with subcommittees. Tom?
Last Wednesday, I spoke to the department head meeting, and I had Ryan Quimby bring, put a live demonstration of the sample agenda that we had converted and posted on the town's Facebook page, and it indicated that 640 views, which is quite impressive for that type of page with no marketing or promoting to it. Imagine outside of our town clerk's office where we have these, these things posted, 640 people walking in and looking at that. And then we tried to use, then I, then I had demoed where, how we do things currently with the link to our Facebook page, and how convoluted that was, whereas with this simple, and I mean simple transformation of a PDF file to a, you know, JPG, people were able to get the information much quicker, more smartphone-friendly. And I think that message was very clear with that demonstration. So, I've received assurances from, you know, from, from our town manager, our town clerk, as well as our IT department, to hopefully work on some strategy to put some, something in motion. So, in the interim, what I'm gonna suggest is we'll, you know, suspend the subcommittee reports until October, so that, and that should be enough time to come up with some type of plan, where our information can now be put on our Facebook page, I just don't know which group is gonna, is gonna run with it. And if for whatever reason it's not in place by, you know, for October meeting, then we'll have to consider something more, more as a group, but without a doubt, it's, it's an overwhelming success in terms of getting information out to the people. I mean, 640 impressions like that is without any, you know, is quite impressive, so I think we need to get more of that. Hopefully, you know, you guys can come up with something internally, and then we can finalize it.
Do you have any report for the subcommittee that would give us the parameters that you want us to work within?
Basically, it's just to find out who, what I'm looking for is nothing regarding the subcommittee, it's in terms of how is information given right now? We are, we know that at the end of the day, matters are physically clipped and posted outside the clerk's office. You know, how does it get to that point? And at what stage can what, this form be converted to a JPG, and also shared to whoever manages our website, strike that, our Facebook, social media page, and get it put up there? So, it's just a question of, we, we know the end result is posted, but what I didn't know is how it gets to that point, and how, and where in the process can it be copied and then put up there? Is it a, you know, an effort with the clerk's office and the IT department, and so forth? I mean, I could formalize it with, by having the committee meet, but really, all, all they're gonna be asking is the same, the same question.
I think to just have, if you have a sub, a council subcommittee, to have some kind of minutes that are then given to the council as a, you know, rather on board-
That's what I was, that's what I was gonna do, I was gonna-
And then, and then we have an official record of where, where the subcommittee, I mean, that's how the licensing subcommittee work in the bylaw.
No, I, I understand. It's just basically what I think is, is before I, before I got all these people to gather again, I think the question is gonna be is, as chair, what did I find out to report to them? And I'm gonna report to them and say, "I spoke on the subcommittee's behalf, and I spoke to department heads, and I'm trying to get a clear picture of how information gets to the endpoint, and at what point in that information stream can we do something?" And once I have that information, I can hold a meeting, and, and, you know, all I know is an end result, and individuals starting it, I don't know what happens in the middle, and that's all I'm asking for right now. And then, I can reserve, you know, have the subcommittee back, and I can speak to them intelligently and just say, "Now, what can we do with this information?"
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're up again.
Nope. There's the asterisk, nothing to say.
I was gonna say, okay. Kathy?
Okay, the licensing subcommittee met on June the 12th to review the fees for all non-alcohol-related licenses. Similar to the alcohol license fees, but not quite as in arrears, these, a review of these fees had, had not been undertaken for nearly 20 years. And so, our task was to review them. We gathered information from 11 adjacent communities as a frame of reference, but certainly not a need to necessarily duplicate their, their fees, because some of them, some of the adjacent communities are, like Springfield, much larger than, than East Long Meadow, and have a significantly higher fee structure. But that said, we have identified new fees that will become effective January 1st of 2019, when the licenses, when the licensees get their next cycle of licenses. The five categories that are reviewed by the committee were common victual, which will go to $50, automatic amusements, 75, entertainment license, $75, Sunday entertainment license, $75, and car sales, whether it be a new, new cars, used cars, or junk cars, that's the three categories that the state distinguishes. Each of those categories, the new fee would be $125. We also, as a committee, decided that since we have given a pretty rigorous review to this category of licenses, as well as the alcoholic licenses, that as a matter of practice, we would ask the council to recommend a bi-annual review. I don't see the need every year necessarily to increase in, in fees, and so, if the council approves that, by approving the minutes, the next scheduled review would not occur any earlier than January 1st of 2020. And then we would go forward from there every two years, undertaking review of those categories. That's it.
So, then we had the approval for the June 12th, 2018 open session for the licensing matters. All the ten motions approved, the June 12th, 2018 open session, meeting minutes for the licensing subcommittee.
Second.
It's moved and seconded for the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Paul?
Okay, we got, the general bylaw subcommittee, we, we met on, I believe it was the 18th in the morning, and we ended up making four minor amendments to the, to the revolving funds of chapter, of chapter 11 of the bylaws, and they were more or less, just a little bit more verbiage to, that was brought up by the council, by the subcommittee members to just make things a little, a little clearer in their eyes. It doesn't change any of the content, it doesn't change any of the, of what's gonna happen with that, so it's just a matter of, there's four, there's four minor changes that we have to put into, you know, if you, if it's agreed upon, to just sort of buff up the-
It was just in chapter 11?
Yeah.
It's tonight, don't really do that. You're gonna add them later?
Yeah. Tom, how do, we gonna add them after the fact, or we gonna add, are they gonna be, 'cause I believe that's on-
Yeah, it's on the agenda under public hearing.
Okay. So, we're voting, so the public hearing will include the new changes?
Exactly.
Okay.
Right.
Then we don't have to do any more. What's that? Yeah, if you have, yeah, if you have any questions, sir.
For licensing matters, today we have a one-day liquor license for Bentleys for the 4th of July beer tent, and it's actually four. One day, it's four one-days, right? Five one-day licenses.
I'm, I'm abstaining from voting, but I don't really think I believe we're on to vote, so, I don't matter.
Just a note, when they applied, they applied from 5:00 PM to midnight. We had some conversation with the chief as well, and the carnival hours are 6:00 to 11:00, so the recommendation is 6:00 to 11:00 instead of 5:00.
Okay.
How are you?
Good.
So, all their paperwork is in order, and we're submitted, so, I'm not gonna take a motion to approve the one-day liquor licenses for Bentleys for the 4th of July beer tent from 6:00 to 11:00 PM.
So, move. Seconding.
It's moved and seconded for the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have two one-days for Masai Temple First Rooms for July 21st, 2018, 5:00 to 10:00 for a birthday party, so a one-day liquor license. Masai Temple has some minor safety compliance issues that they're working with the building system, so we could approve a contingent upon the completion of the repair of the necessary fixes for both of those, but it's just a note that Kevin's working with them to try and get that straightened out.
Any idea where they are?
No. It was one year's name of safety compliance check, the route of compliance was some, it wasn't anything major.
It was something that they could fix in a relatively short period of time.
These aren't till, you know-
Middle of July.
Yeah. Three, three and a half weeks.
So, and they submitted all their paperwork as well, so, we have the one-day liquor license, all the ten motions, approve a one-day license. Liquor license for Masai Temple for July 21st, 2018, filed at 10:00 PM.
So, move. Second.
Moved and seconded for the discussion. Here in all favor?
Aye.
One-day liquor license, I'll entertain a motion for a one-day liquor license for Masai Temple for July 28th, 2018, 6:00 to 11:00 PM, for questioning reception of the DJ.
So, move. Second.
And a contingent upon-
Correct. Right.
It's moved and seconded for the discussion. Here in all favor?
Aye.
Old business?
Mm-hmm.
New business, financial matters. Radio dispatch council upgrade swap.
So, the police chief and fire chief are here to talk about that. And Sarah, are you involved in that conversation as well?
Yes.
Yeah, she knows where the money is coming from and going to.
Freaking out.
Thank you.
Timing.
Oh, wow. I was wondering what happened to Ryan, I thought, hmm.
Let's try to fix the AC. Time in this nice warm room, so.
We always knew you had cameras everywhere. You heard that we were on this agenda item, didn't you?
So, I think in front of you, you should have something authored by Mr. Quimby to the council, so I think that's pretty self-
Part of your packet?
It's in your packet. You had a chance to read it, entertain any kind of questions that you may have from that. I can give you a synopsis real quick if you want.
Why don't you give them a brief synopsis of how this came about?
So, Agawam is looking to expand their dispatch, Agawam PD, for whatever reason, I believe they took on the fire department. They have two dispatch consoles right now, and they need a third. We have their third, basically, and their model is what sits in our dispatch now with the PD. Seeing they needed it yesterday, there's no time to order another one, and there might be some other things involved on their end, but they offered us a, a deal, if you wanna call that, that they would take our console off our hands, our two consoles, 'cause our fire department console and our console are the same one.
Six years old?
Goostown, who's the vendor in this, they're either five, six years old, somewhere in there.
We both use the same vendor.
Yes, we both have Goostown, I'm sorry. So, basically, Agawam looking for that third console, we have it, they would provide us with two new Avtech consoles, which are different from Motorola, they are more user-friendly and more expandable.
Serviceable.
Brand-new consoles. In replace, there's a dollar amount, which is uneven, there's a dollar amount of $30,000 in the package, it's basically shuffling money from one town to the other to make the transaction happen. So, we would be giving up our two older consoles and getting two brand-new Avtech consoles, which, if we were to go down the road with Hamden, that's what, we anticipate the Hamden console would be, the same consoles we would be getting. So, compatibility all around is pretty good, and I'll let you-
And when it was time, when it would be time for us to upgrade our consoles, that would more than likely be the way we would go, would be with the Avtechs. It's the latest technology, it has a lot of interoperability advantages over the Motorolas that we currently have.
So, Agawam would pay us 30,000, or Goostown would pay us 30,000?
No, Agawam would pay us.
Agawam will pay us 30,000, we pay Goostown that 30,000, and we get the Avtechs in place of the older Motorolas that we have. So, it seems like a win-win for all of us.
It's a benefit all around, because if we were to just go to Goostown to buy the same consoles, it would be more, is my understanding.
Sixty-something.
So, we're saving money there with this deal, they get the correct model and everything, and it's, it's close by, and so it's a win on everybody's end. And the consoles are used at the police and fire department, not just, it uses, they use it for their doors, they use it for multiple aspects, so even if we do do a regional dispatch, we would still need these consoles. It's not like those would go away.
I was just understanding that Hamden and East Long Meadow, okay, we, I was hearing that East Long Meadow, we're digital, and Hamden is analog. Does this digital analog have anything to do with this, or that's totally different?
No, so, that's the technology we use in our frequency range, the consoles are kinda like a, two layers above that, so the consoles access radios, basically, and then those radios communicate. So, with these consoles, they'll be able to communicate in our VHF digital and Hamden's VHF analog, as well as the UHF regional frequencies.
Some of our mutual aid partners are UHF.
Yeah.
Of our higher range.
Uh, this is all, all this.
800.
800.
I might just add, this move is not driven by pairing up with any other community, it's basically replacing our consoles, they're more user-friendly. I guess the gateways pair up more, more easily as well, right?
Yep. If we went to a regional arrangement, we would basically replicate our console hardware in Hamden, and then the two controllers can mirror each other, so if something were to happen on either end, the other side could take over the full, they'd be the same exact consoles, same appearance and everything.
So, if you're scratching your head as to why the town council needs to be involved with this at all, it's because we have to deposit the money, I think, into free cash, and you all need to allow us to withdraw the money from free cash, 'cause it won't be a, the timing won't be exactly-
Well, it's also a capital project, 'cause it's over the $20,000, so you need to approve that and the funding source. So, I would recommend that we fund it out of free cash, which we have available until this Saturday.
So, it's a good thing you're meeting today.
And our existing hardware won't be removed until the new hardware's installed, tested, and confirmed that everything's working.
All right, so all the ten motions- All right. So I'll entertain a motion to approve a request for free cash, $30,000 to fund the public safety dispatch. Council upgrade is outlined in the memo to the town council from the IT director, Ryan.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, further discussion. Here in none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah, school buses.
Sarah, talk to us about school buses. In 10 seconds or less.
Okay. So, we're selling the school buses. The purchase and sale will occur on this Friday morning, the 29th. We are selling the school buses to LVPEC, all 21 of them. We did receive three appraisals for the school buses. We, one was very low, $235,000 for the 21 buses. The next one was $340,200, and the next one was $343,500. So the top two were very close. We negotiated with LVPEC for the middle price. So it's a difference of $3,300, but given that nobody's out looking for 21 school buses, the $3,300 just seemed very reasonable to be able to do. We wind up not having a loss on the debt that we owe with the buses. So this is to let you know about that. The other aspect of the buses is the debt having to do with it. So, it was a 20-year bond. It is not callable until 2021, which means that we cannot use the proceeds of the sale to pay off the debt at this time. So what we can do is we can use those proceeds for another debt project that we're going to use. So I will be coming before you on a different day with what that project is and the language for it, but I just wanted to give you the heads-up about it. We do have two years from the date of sale of the assets. In order to do that, to not receive any, essentially penalties, at having tax-exempt bonds sitting in an account and not being used for a tax-exempt purpose. Any questions at this point?
I would ask, how soon is this going to happen?
How soon is what part going to happen?
The actual sale.
It's this Friday.
Oh.
This Friday morning.
School year, we don't need the buses.
Exactly. It worked out so the school year ended, and then for LVPEC, they didn't want to, they have the same year-end we do. So it was as close to year-end without actually being on year-end, because none of us want to come on the weekend, so.
So, and I believe you said, the company that's going to provide the busing service for us is actually the buyer of our buses?
That's correct. And we're a member of that collaborative. And the summer busing, which they will need the buses for, begins next week.
You mentioned that the note was going to be due in 2021?
It becomes callable in 2021.
Callable.
Yes.
When? January 1st, July 1st, December 31st?
I believe it's July 1st, but I can confirm that.
Okay. That'd be good to know.
Okay.
Could you explain this whole callable and non-callable? I'm just maybe like, where this all, this works?
To give you a simple version.
Please.
Okay. You want to get a bond for something, right? So the person who is giving you the money for the bond says, how is it going to be worth it for me? They want a guarantee of some kind. So that's why they charge interest, right? Because then they're making money on their money. Well, they want a guarantee that they're not going to give you this money, and then you're going to pay it off right away. They want a guarantee that they make at least a certain amount.
That's kind of where I thought you were going.
So, they say, okay, a portion of that, up until this date, you can't prepay me early, because therefore I at least get that amount of money back on my investment. So that's when it's callable. So that's how that works. So then after it's callable, you can refinance if you wanted, you could pay it all off, whatnot. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
So there's no prepayment penalties?
Well, there is.
You can't, you can't want it off early.
The investors are expecting a certain finite return period, and we can't cut it short.
Right. And is that all, just for future bonding purposes, is that all standard? There's no way to find a bond agency that is going to allow you to pay off debt when you want to pay off debt, without penalties?
Well, you probably could, but you're probably going to pay much more for it, because...
But in this case, we actually wouldn't have paid much more for it. If we paid it off three years in advance, if you did, if you mapped that out.
No, but I'm saying that they probably would charge you more fees, or more interest, or whatnot, because whomever's loaning you that money, it has to be worth it for them to loan the money. So, it would depend on your market, but it's very, very typical, especially in municipal bonds.
So that's standard.
Mm-hmm.
You're usually long-term and big amounts of money that you generally pay off.
I'm just asking if there's, if there's an option, because, you know, essentially, you know, we're locked into a situation where we no longer own something and continue to pay for it, we can't pay it off for another couple of years.
We don't usually do that.
Yeah, this doesn't usually happen.
Well, that's not an item that you would normally bond anyway.
Yeah, it was bonding for police car buses. So you usually bond for the life of a project, and, and...
I understand. Just more for future.
So, one of the things that happens is, so after, so for instance, on May 22nd, the town council voted to approve the budget and the capital items, and some of those items were for, to authorize us to bond. So those items, part of what the treasurer's responsibility is, is to say, okay, go out into the market, see what kinds of interest rates, what can they get for it, does it make sense to combine things, what the life of each of those individual assets are, to figure out what makes the best sense financially for each of those. So that's part of what the treasurer does, is examine those to try to get the best deal possible. So, I, you know, this was back in 2011 when these ones were bonded, so I'm not really sure what the market was like at that point, but that was what the...
Yeah, no worries. I understand this was done, obviously, well before we were here. I do have one other question, though. You talked about coming back and recommending, you know, how we spend the money. You know, I would suggest it probably makes sense to work in conjunction with maybe a subcommittee of council members, and so we, you're not wasting your time, because we may have other thoughts on where that money should be spent.
Well, my recommendation was going to be on school projects for bonding that were already approved by the town council, is to just, to keep it school with school, and to keep there not to authorize new projects, was what my intention was. But absolutely, I will work with.
I think that makes sense. The influence should come, you know, from here, or more in a collaborative manner, and maybe that's what we'll decide as a group. So, yeah, I mean, I think that would just save you time. And when you come back, it's your recommendation and the subcommittee's recommendation, and then I think that'd make more sense. I don't speak for anyone else, I just want to know a little bit more about the facts, and I'd be happy to contribute my time. I don't know if anyone else wants to join in. It's up to you guys. Or we can just wait for a recommendation, it's up to you.
Well, if you get a recommendation, because I think she's kind of halfway there, and then the subcommittee talks about it.
Right, I'm still working on the details, so I don't want to mention that project till only July 12th, Sarah.
But then you, then the subcommittee could certainly then say, well, that's one recommendation. What other things could we possibly do? Might save you all some time to do without those.
So what kind of exposure would we have when the bond becomes callable? What would be, your best guess, what the balance would be? Not over $340,000?
Oh, no, no. We have three, so related to the school buses, we have $340,200 left owed on it. So, it would be less than that. If you want, I can turn on my computer and I can tell you the exact amount.
No, I'm just curious to see whether, I wasn't sure if it was an appreciable lower amount, at least somehow, you know, put that money aside, so that when we get hit with that amount, we're not, you know, raiding from other accounts to pay for it, because that's the money we use.
All you're going to do is shuffle the money from one, school buses to the school capital project, then back to free cash.
Is also when it's your option to claim it early. You don't have to cash it in. So let's say that you change it to a different project, that other project would have to have a useful life that didn't exceed that timeframe. So you can just keep paying the bond till it's done, it's just instead of it being for buses, it would be for whatever the other asset is that you chose. You wouldn't be extending or shortening the life.
Okay.
You could if you wanted to shorten it, but not extend.
Do you want to have some preemptive influence, or do you want to just wait for a recommendation?
I think maybe once we hear the recommendation, then inform the subcommittee, to see what she says.
Well, we have a budget subcommittee.
Oh, actually, yeah.
Maybe that could be within, under that, under that burden.
And that subcommittee could really learn, work on the whole bonding process, too. I think it's a good idea. Just let her do the work first.
Right. Because right now, when it's callable is after the two-year time, when you'd have the arbitrage. So you can't wait until it's callable to then use that money.
Sounds like a plan. That's good.
Yeah, keep the existing committee, expand its scope.
That works for me.
All right.
So it would be that budget subcommittee, and who was on that?
Change its name to Budget and Financial Matters Subcommittee.
And who was on the committee?
I was not.
Tom.
You were not?
No.
You?
Mike.
Tom, Kevin, Mike, Kathy?
And Tom, I was the alternate.
Tom, Mike, Kevin. Okay. So, so we'll come up with a recommendation, and then we'll recommend it to the subcommittee. And then you can meet and, you know...
And the subcommittee will make a recommendation to the full council.
Right, right. That was my point with Don's subcommittee, that it should be a recommendation to the full council, and then we implement whatever.
That's going to happen. It's just that I told them I was going to do some fact-finding. And I found that the website isn't going to work the way it is. And I also, I said, well, this is all terms, I want to give them constructive information before we meet again.
Okay, cool. Any other school bus-related questions?
Don't run away.
Well, I think you have a public hearing, don't you?
Yes, we do. But thank you for handling that.
Thanks, Sarah.
You guys did a good job on that.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll do our first public hearing. We have a public hearing scheduled for wines and malt beverages, on-premises liquor license for Wandering Spirit LLC. Doing business as Wandering Spirit. Reason for the public hearings is to discuss a new wine, malt beverage liquor license for Wandering Spirit LLC, DBA Wandering Spirit. I'm going to introduce the council members, O'Connor, Federici, Ford, Hamley, Anderson, Hill, and Kane. It's a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public meeting, and have the clerk read the notice into the record.
Notice is hereby given under chapter 138 of the general laws that a Wandering Spirit LLC, DBA A Wandering Spirit, 169 Shaker Road, Unit 1, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, has applied for a wine and malt beverages on-premises liquor license. The town council will hold a public hearing on the application on Tuesday, June 26th, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. in the Council and Agent Meeting Room, 328 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts. For the council, Thomas Florence, clerk of the council.
All right. This time, we'll have the applicant present and discuss the application. Wes, you can come up.
How are you doing?
How are you?
Good. How are you?
How's this work?
You can tell us a little bit about your plan. Just name your name and address, and tell us a little bit about it.
Yeah, we are Wandering Spirit. My name is Wesley Crouch. Fifty percent partner, this is Sheila Aids, manager of the partnership as well. Our business is a spiritually-guided retail store that is going to allow us to meet people where they are, and that has a range of products. We have up to 42 different product categories, very skews. We'll offer various services to match that as well. And that's primarily what our business is all about. We're located 169 Shaker Road, Unit 1. And we're hopefully that we can have a little lounge area that's going to be for people to relax, sit back. It'll be an access area for people to be able to access things, as far as internet, various spiritual content, various things like that. Also be able to enjoy wine tastings, as far as, like, for instance, decorating cakes, sip and draws, sip and paints, things like that. So it'd be a tool for us to use as an augmentation for what we're trying to bring to the community.
All right. I'm going to open it up for public input. Don't jump at once. Okay. Let's see. All right, I'll close the public hearing at this point, and we can discuss it.
Can you give us a little overview of what you perceive the business to be? You're going to have someone come in and do what? What's the main business?
Well, we're going to be selling products, you know, some retail.
What types of products?
We'd be selling anything from crystals, incense. Store like Northampton or Madoffie in Windsor, Connecticut, they're two closest ones you can go to like this, and one should be. Soaps, yoga materials, anything that has to do with your candles, crystals, furniture, Himalayan, salt. There's tons of them. Music, movies, oils, essential pendulums. You know, so probably about 500 different types of products we'll be selling.
So what's going to cause the people to linger, or spend time in the shop, or they're going to buy something?
Well, we're going to have, we're going to have classes. We'll be teaching them Reiki, we'll be teaching them different modalities of energy work. We'll be teaching them, you know, Kundalini-type of work. And so, what we're hoping to do is, is have people come in, we'd like to have paranormal people come in, tell ghost stories, things like that. We'd like to do in Agawam and West Springfield, we'll invite them, we'll invite people like the minimalist, which come in, and the millennials love this. There's a contest they'll do, and see how you can minimize, you know, you can only have like five pairs of jeans, you can only have six of this, and there's a challenge for the millennials to skinny it down what they really need in life versus all the things we have, and that type of stuff. So it's a really broad range, and that's why our tagline is, we meet you where you are, because we have no idea where people are. You know, so it's up to them to come in to us, we'll help them decide if they want to do things, or if they have a perfect product selection that will allow them to pick and choose what they need at the time. I hope that answers your question, sir.
So you're looking to serve beer and wine as part of certain, in other words, is that going to be like, I could stop in and just grab a wine?
No, we're not going to, no, our hours are going to be limited for that. It's going to be from 5:00 o'clock to like 9:00. We're not a bar. We're not going to be staying open late Saturday nights. I need to rest. You know, things like that. So it's truly going to be one of those areas where you sit down and just enjoy yourself, relax, have wine tastings and things like that. It'll be, you know, over the course of time. And if people want to come in after 5:00 o'clock, whatever, you know, they can sit down and have beer or a glass of wine, absolutely.
So is it the kind of thing that you go to a spa, and they say, would you like a glass of wine?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Or is it the kind of thing where you have a sit-down bar, and people go in there, and it's not that kind of?
No. Sit down, would you like a glass of wine, type of thing. Now, it doesn't mean that we, you know, will not have the capability to send them to order something if they like that. That's the old idea, on premise, you know, I'm trying to order. But it's not our main business, you know, by far, but it's a very big augmentation to our business. You know, so probably talking roughly 25% of revenue streams, you know, roughly, run-up percentage, you know. You know, in combination, now, it's all about balance. So we're not expecting people to come in and, you know, whipping it up, you know, that type of thing. So we're looking for more of a balanced approach.
It's just beer and wine?
Yes, just beer and wine. No liquor.
You don't want to fall asleep while they're meditating?
No.
Maybe. All over.
You could.
You know, not, just from a curiosity point of view, it doesn't affect my voting, but is it going to be sort of like, you know, organic beers and wines, or anything unique, or more your mainline Bud Lights and?
We're going to try to make it unique with local wineries, like Black Birch, things like that. There's a couple around we're trying to do. You know, we're not looking to bring in the top 10, you know, so to speak, if you go into a liquor store, or wine store, or whatever. Although, my personal favorite, you know, Rodney Strong, you know, I like that. You know, it's not that expensive, and you can have a glass, enjoy it. Probably carry that, because I'd probably need a glass of wine after the day myself, but, you know, it's okay.
Any other questions? All right. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the on-premises malt, wine, malt beverage liquor license for Wandering Spirit, DBA Wandering Spirit.
I have one more question. Are they required to be tip-certified?
I already have my subscription, sir.
So anybody that would be serving alcohol on your premise would be tip-certified?
Yes.
Is that part of the application? Is that standard?
Yeah.
You did change.
It's a standard.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We have the continuation of the public hearing for changes and updates to the town's general bylaws. This is your thing, Paul, right?
Yes.
Reason for the public hearing is to continue second reading for discussion regarding the new proposed general bylaw for revolving funds. Council members are O'Connor, Federici, Ford, Manley, Anderson, Hill, and Kane. I'm going to open the public meeting and have the clerk read the notice into the record.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on June 26, 2018, at 6:40 PM in the meeting room of the Council on Aging located at 328 North Main Street to address changes and updates to the town's general bylaws. Information related to the general bylaw updates are on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the council, Thomas Florence, Clerk of the Council.
All right, so we normally have the applicant, which is Paul, right?
Well, it's actually Sarah.
The committee, Sarah, really.
Sarah sort of like the applicant, but.
So we have the... Sarah, you want to come up?
Yeah.
Do you have the changes in it?
Oh, not with the changes, no. Oh, is this with the changes? Yes, I'm sorry. I forgot the whole thing. Thank you.
Did you read it? Did you look at the changes already?
Uh-uh.
Tom, do you have a copy of the overall document?
Well, we have read it twice.
Oh, we did, okay.
So this is just a discussion to those four minor changes to Chapter 11.
Basically, we need your opinion.
Would you mind hearing from the committee some of the recommended changes and what the thought process was there to give a little bit of background?
Sure. Sure.
Most if you whoever hasn't, if you look at the amendments to the Chapter 11, the First Amendment, the original form, I don't know exactly where it is here. We did some... So it says, under C, yeah. It says, "The total amount spent during fiscal year shall not exceed the amount authorized by the town council on or before July 1st of that fiscal year, or any increased amount of that authorization that is later approved during the fiscal year by the town council and town manager." So the committee thought the word jointly, made jointly by the town council and town manager would be a little more descriptive. So that's the only change on that particular paragraph. It doesn't change the intent of the paragraph. It doesn't change anything except it just makes people know that it's a joint effort between the town council and town manager. The second one, under Section 5, under Authorized Revolving Funds, Part E, said, "Any restrictions or conditions on expenditures from each fund." Instead of that, the committee decided that it would be a good idea to specify those particular, you know, particular fees that may have restrictions or conditions. So there would be things like legal fees, lawyers, attorney fees, or rent, which were items that we had taken from, I believe, from the state, you know, state records that are items that would be particular restrictions or conditions from each fund. So that, we wanted to add that just to be a little more, make it a little more clear, not, you know, for the general public, if they actually want to read this. Under Section 5, Authorized Revolving Funds, Part G, it said, "The fiscal years each fund shall operate under this bylaw." We just put beginning July 1st and ending June 30th, so there'll be no question as to what the fiscal year was, if you looked at it. And then the final one, under Item F, which is there's a schedule here of the different revolving funds and their, what they're authorized to take in, spend, and the activities that they're spending it on and other requirements. What we wanted to do is for budgeting process, we wanted to have an additional report generated other than just a year-end form, identifying year-to-date income and expenses for each fund provided to the town council by March 15th of each year to aid us, because it aided us in the budget process, because we would have the last, the previous year's full statement from these accounts. But we'd also have a year-to-date, just to see if there's anything that may have been, you know, out of whack or something skewed or some, you know, expenditures exceeding what they should basically through three quarters of the year. So those are the basic changes. I didn't think, and I don't think the board thought they were anything earth-shattering. And I do want to thank Tom and Tom.
And Pat.
And Pat, and for helping with this, because their input was very beneficial in getting this done. I couldn't have done it by myself.
Sarah, any thoughts? For the first one, the jointly, you know, it doesn't change the intent, really. Part of the process anyway to do an increase is you need to go before the town manager. The town manager needs to support that and bring that to the town council, so it couldn't be increased without the town manager's support. So it doesn't really change it at all. So under Section Number 2, the question that I have is, so if it's legal fees, lawyer, attorney fees, rent, so what exactly is the restriction or condition? I'm sorry, I don't understand what that is.
I believe those items cannot be paid from...
They're excluded.
They're excluded, yeah.
Oh, okay, that's what you mean. Yep, and none of ours currently have anything even remotely like that. Yep.
But you never know.
True.
Yeah.
No, they won't.
That's it.
Number 3 is fine. And number 4, my question is, who has that additional report? So the way the revolving funds are listed, it's whichever department is responsible. And so that department is responsible to provide the town accountant that report. So in this, is it the department is providing that report to the town council? Or are you asking the town accountant to therefore provide the report to the town council?
I would...
By March 15th, you're talking?
By the March 15th that they're suggesting, yes.
They should provide it to you.
Yeah, I would think they should provide it to you and then you provide it to us, just so you do it once over and make sure everything looks copacetic.
Okay.
Okay.
Part of what I'm doing anyway at the same time of year, so, okay.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what we figured. Like I said, it just gives us another little tool to, you know.
All right, any other public input? All right, we're going to close the hearing then, I guess. I didn't talk about it much or something. So we can take a vote if everybody's ready. All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve the new revolving fund general bylaws read into the minutes at the May 22, 2018, June 12, 2018 council meeting with the attached four amendments as set forth by the bylaw subcommittee.
Someone?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hear or none? All in favor?
All right.
That's the funny part. That's the funny thing.
I'll move on to the public hearing for the proposed local acceptance change in the current waiting period for veterans meeting and requirements for exemption from five years to one year in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, second reading. So the reason for this public hearing is to read for a second time a new proposed general bylaw to address a local acceptance changing the current waiting period for veterans meeting requirements for an exemption from five years to one year in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5. Council members are O'Connor, Federici, Ford, Manley, Anderson, Hill, and Kane. At this time, I want to open the public meeting and have the clerk read the notice into the record.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 26, 2018, at 6:45 PM in the meeting room of the Council on Aging located at 328 North Main Street to address a proposed local acceptance that would change the current waiting period for veterans meeting the requirements for an exemption from five years to one year in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, pursuant to clauses 22, 22A, 22B, 22C, 22D, 22E, and 22F. Information related to this proposed bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the council, Thomas Florence, Clerk of the Council.
Thanks, Tom. At this time, you going to reread that whole thing? Do you have a copy of it?
We have it. It's not in your packets. We apologize for that. If one of the council members has supporting document on their computer.
I do. Thank you. I get it.
It's the packet that was sent to you on Friday. It's down, it's third to the end.
I can get my mail. I have a iPhone. Proposed new local option is to accept an amendment to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22, 22A, 22B, 22C, 22D, 22F, into the East Long Meadow Town General Bylaws. Current assessors follow Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22, 22A, 22B, 22C, 22D, 22E, and 22F, which allows for exemption providing the veteran with domicile in Massachusetts for at least six months prior to entering such service or having residing in the Commonwealth for five consecutive years prior to date of filing. Proposed new local option is to change the residence requirement for the veterans to be domiciled in Massachusetts for at least six months prior to entering such service or having residing in the Commonwealth for at least one consecutive year before the tax year begins. Notwithstanding this section in any city or town which accepts this clause, the exemption is available pursuant to Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22, 22A, 22B, 22C, 22D, 22E, and 22F may be granted to otherwise eligible persons who have residing in the Commonwealth for one-year period prior to the date of filing for exemptions pursuant to the absolute clause. Thanks. Any public comment? Okay. And we're going to close the hearing and we can talk about it. Close the hearing now. And this one seems like a no-brainer.
This is a no-brainer.
So we'll entertain a motion. I've got to find that sheet. Entertain a motion to approve a new general bylaw to address proposed local acceptance changing the current waiting period for veterans meeting the requirements for an exemption from five years to one year in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, is read into the minutes at the June 12, 2018, June 26, 2018 council meeting.
Someone?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hear or none? All in favor?
All right.
All right. So we'll move on to the next one. Public hearing to address a proposed local acceptance that would defer real estate taxes while a member of the military is on active service outside the Commonwealth and for the next 180 days after that service. Information related to this proposed bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the council, Thomas Florence, Clerk of the Council. Thanks, Tom. So this is to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5L, into the East Long Meadow Town General Bylaws. Chapter 59, Assessment of Local Taxes, Section 5L, deferral of taxes due by a member of Massachusetts National Guard or reservist on active duty outside the Commonwealth. My acceptance of this section by a municipality and notwithstanding any other provisions of this chapter, to the contrary, any taxes due under this chapter by a member of Massachusetts National Guard or reservist or dependent of a member of the Massachusetts National Guard or reservist shall be deferred while that member is on active service outside the Commonwealth and for the next 180 days after that service. No interest or penalty shall be assessed for any period before the expiration of those 180 days. Public comment? No. All right. Well, we'll close the public hearing and maybe you want to talk about that? So I will entertain a motion to approve a new general bylaw to address a proposed local acceptance that would defer real estate taxes while a member of the military is on active service outside the Commonwealth and for the next 180 days after that service in accordance with the Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, as read into the minutes at the June 12, 2018, and June 26, 2018 council meetings.
Someone?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hear or none? All in favor?
All right.
And the next public hearing is to address a proposed local acceptance that would defer excise taxes while a member of the military is on active service outside the Commonwealth and for the next 180 days after that service in accordance with the Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, as read into the minutes at the June 12, 2018, June 26, 2018 council meetings. So... All right. So we'll entertain a motion to approve a new general bylaw to address a proposed local acceptance that would defer real estate taxes while a member of the military is on active service outside the Commonwealth and for the next 180 days after that service. Information related to this proposed bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the council, Thomas Florence, Clerk of the Council. Thanks, Tom. So this is to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5L, into the East Long Meadow Town General Bylaws. Chapter 59, Assessment of Local Taxes, Section 5L, deferral of taxes due by a member of Massachusetts National Guard or reservist on active duty outside the Commonwealth. My acceptance of this section by a municipality and notwithstanding any other provisions of this chapter, to the contrary, any taxes due under this chapter by a member of Massachusetts National Guard or reservist or dependent of a member of the Massachusetts National Guard or reservist shall be deferred while that member is on active service outside the Commonwealth and for the next 180 days after that service. No interest or penalty shall be assessed for any period before the expiration of those 180 days. Public comment? None. All right, I'm going to close the hearing then. And anybody? No. So I will entertain a motion to approve a new general bylaw to address a proposed local acceptance that would defer excise taxes while a member of the military is on active duty outside the Commonwealth and for the next 180 days after that service. Information related to this proposed bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the council, Thomas Florence, Clerk of the Council. Yeah, we're just trying to find it over here. So it says 68. Maybe it was the last page. There we go. All right. Here we go. So in this case, we, to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 68, Section 9, in the East Long Meadow Town General Bylaws, Chapter 68, deferral of excise taxes due by Massachusetts National Guard members or reservists on active duty and dependence, Section 9, deferral of excise taxes due by Massachusetts National Guard members or reservists on active duty and dependence, in any city or town except to the provisions of this section, notwithstanding any other provision of this chapter, to the contrary, any excise due under this chapter by a member of the Massachusetts National Guard or reservist or dependent of a member of the Massachusetts National Guard or reservist shall be deferred while that member is on active service outside the Commonwealth and for a period of up to 180 days after completion of that service. No interest or penalty shall be assessed for any period before the expiration of the 180 days. Public comment? None. All right, I'm going to close the hearing then. And anybody? No. So I'm going to entertain a motion to approve a new general bylaw to address a proposed local acceptance that would defer excise taxes while a member of the military is on active service outside the Commonwealth and for the next 180 days after that service in accordance with the Mass General Law, Chapter 68, Section 9. Notwithstanding any other provision of this chapter, to the contrary, any excise due under this chapter by a member of the Massachusetts National Guard or reservist or dependent of a member of the Massachusetts National Guard or reservist shall be deferred while that member is on active service outside the Commonwealth and for a period of up to 180 days after completion of that service. No interest or penalty shall be assessed for any period before the expiration of the 180 days. Public comment? None. All right, I'm going to close the hearing then. And anybody? No. So I'm going to entertain a motion to approve a new general bylaw to address a proposed local acceptance that would defer excise taxes while a member of the military is on active service outside the Commonwealth and for the next 180 days after that service in accordance with the Mass General Law, Chapter 68, Section 5, as read into the minutes at the June 12, 2018, and June 26, 2018 council meetings.
Someone?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hear or none? All in favor?
All right.
And the next public hearing is to address a proposed local acceptance that would defer excise taxes while a member of the military is on active service outside the Commonwealth and for the next 180 days after that service in accordance with the Mass General Law, Chapter 68, Section 9. The reason for the public hearing is to read for a second time a new proposed general bylaw to address a local acceptance that would defer excise taxes while a member of the military is on active service outside the Commonwealth and for the next 180 days National Guard or reservist shall be deferred while that member is on active service outside the Commonwealth and for a period of up to a hundred and eighty days after completion of that service. No interest or penalty shall be assessed for any period before the expiration of the hundred and eighty days. Public comment? None. All right, I'm going to close the hearing. And, anybody? No. So I'm going to entertain a motion to approve a new general bylaw to address a proposed local acceptance that would defer excise tax while a member of the military is on active service outside the Commonwealth and for the next hundred and eighty days after that service in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 68, Section 9, is read into the minutes at the June 12, 2018, and June 26, 2018 council meetings.
Someone?
Second.
It's moved in second, any further discussion? Hear or none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'm going to entertain a motion to move into executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, to discuss negotiations for combined dispatch contracts, which, to do publicly, would diminish our negotiation capacity.
Someone?
Second.
Only to return to open session, adjourned. Sorry.
Sorry. I'll remove that. Not remove, but remove.
You're removing. Gotcha.
I was going to say, don't remove it.
Move in second.
Yes, with the change.
All in favor?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Federici?
Yes.
Ford?
Aye.
Aye. Anderson?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Very good.
I'm nearly not a pirate.
So I've been reading up on... We are following the law, because we don't go into executive session very often, and one of the things it says here is, "The public body by... may authorize by a simple majority vote the presence and participation of other individuals at the remote... at the remote participants..." Oh, at the remote participants' language. Well, for anybody to participate. So we would want Attorney Maynard and all these folks.
Not automatically, it's the council.
Kevin is, because he's the councilman.
It didn't have to be. No, I mean, there would be times that it would just be me recording you all.
We're going to make a motion to approve all these guys. The fire chief, the police chief, Ryan, Kevin, Maynard, and Sarah Menard.
And Denise Menard.
No, someone?
Oh, well, I mean, they're in any way.
I'm sorry?
Did you include Mr. Quibby?
I did.
All those guys.
He's not getting out any.
Did you approve some of the others?
So it's moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye. I moved it.